Habit of saying, and let the church say amen. I was about to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are a church.
Thank you, sir.
All right. A meeting of the Berkeley County Commission is now called to order. Any items from the public? Hearing none, any approval of the agenda?
So moved. A second?
Then properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. On the purchase will rely on. We have Tracy here with us this morning. If I have any questions for Tracy.
Do not, thank you ma'am.
Do not, thank you. Once again, great job, very lot of detail.
Very good. We have no internal budget revisions this week. We have a change of status received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator for Daniel Connor as a custodian effective six to twenty-five with an annual salary of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Crystal Peterson to change position from peer recovery coach coordinator to therapist one with no salary change effective six to twenty-five. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Jess Lundblod to change position from case manager to peer recovery coach coordinator with a salary change from fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars to sixty thousand, that's effective six to twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Nathan Cronister to be promoted from deputy three to sergeant with a salary change from sixty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars to seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, effective five, twelve, twenty-five, and that is to be paid retroactive. Just leave that in as far as the minutes are concerned. Do we, I don't think we have the accessory this morning. So Board Committee reports, Mr. Hardy.
Oh, so man, busy week. Had a planning commission meeting. We had quite a few people, it turned out, for one of the projects that was looking to advance the final plat, some issues, and I was very happy with our planning department's response. Doug was very quick to be able to speak on it and come up with some remedies, and also Mr. Gant, Mr. Gant is an asset to that board. He knows so much, he has so much knowledge about, you know, those processes, and he was able to come up with a few ideas to try to remedy some of the issues. So we did not advance that project, and we are going to continue to work with the homeowners and work with the developer and hope, you know, make sure that the homeowners knew that this was not the last bite of the apple, that we have more processes in place, and we will be able to continue to help them. So that was a good meeting, and then I had a HEPMO meeting, which I missed, I was texting with Steve because I had met with some, met with Gary and some other people at the sewer board to talk about some stormwater stuff. So I had a good meeting with them in regards to stormwater and trying to have better clarity with that and understanding how that process works, and that's something that I'm going to continue to work on and try to understand better and make sure that when I am explaining those things, I'm explaining them intelligently and truthfully, the best of my ability. So yeah, it's been a busy week, lot of meetings, but a lot of good stuff going on.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Kevin.
Had the pleasure of driving a Deputy Sheriff cruiser to Charleston on Tuesday with Gary following me down the road, and the fun part was coming home with the three delegates in the car with us, and a great conversation we had all the way back from Charleston. But I did want to say this, that the folks that received the vehicles were so appreciative of the donation from Berkeley County, they were thrilled, and they all drove out there with smiles on their faces, didn't Gary? And, you know, even Speaker of the House Hanschall was there representing Clay County that received one of the vehicles, so, but they were all very, very appreciative of that. And they talked about, you know, earlier in the year when you got, they got the two trailers of goods down for the flood victims, and now with the cars and all, and it's just good stuff for us to be part of that, and it's stuff that we need to do, and it was great. So on Wednesday morning, Gary and I were on R and R for an hour, and we talked about the impact fees some more after you and I talked about previous week, Eddie, and we also talked about Inwood Park, and that we're getting ready to go to bid on that project. We talked about the fiber optics program. You know, some people texted in during that conversation and said, well, they're on, one was Butler Chapel Road now, but of course, they're doing things on the east side of the mountain. It's the west side that wouldn't be getting anything if it weren't for this program.
That is correct.
And they're going to average, hopefully, three hundred homes a month until they touch, offer services to twenty-five hundred homes in western Berkeley County on the other side of the mountain. So it's a wonderful thing, and it's going to change, it's going to be life-changing for a lot of people. You know, I feel the frustration where I live, I was trying to be on a conference call with Anthony a week ago with an attorney, Richard Lewis, down in Charleston, and mine acted up that day, and I couldn't get on, I had to listen through the phone conversation. So it's frustrating for people that live in the valley, and it's going to be a wonderful thing for them. We talked about to roll back a little bit. No one seems to understand it, but, and then later yesterday, I did have the, we had the MPO meeting. John, you didn't miss much, there were no major projects discussed, and most of it was just in-house business, stuff that we took care of, and nothing new to report in terms of road projects at this point, so that's it.
Very good. Thank you. I've had a rather challenging week personally with some medical stuff, so didn't get to attend some of, one of the meetings that I was scheduled for, but been taking care of some DOH complaints, people calling about problems with roads, so I've been working with the leadership at DOH to see what can be addressed, and some of it can't. I mean, some of the roads are not DOH-owned, they are privately-owned roads, and unfortunately, there's no mechanism there to help with some of that. Yesterday, I did attend a meeting with Gary and Brandon Truman with the Ambulance Authority, the chief with the Ambulance Authority, with Jefferson County on some dispatch issues, and we're working very closely with them to get those addressed, and hopefully in those critical moments that whether there's a, that the county line doesn't separate somebody from getting help when they needed. So those are the things that we're working on to try and get people help in a timely manner, and just doing the right thing when people need help. I appreciate the efforts and the thought process of being able to get folks help, so. Okay. Next thing, I had a reappointment packet received from Brad Close for the Development Authority, his term does expire on six thirty twenty-five. Should we make that, can we make that appointment today, or we need to wait?
Should they wait till the expiration, Anthony? For the reappointment?
They could do it, you could do it, effective.
Yeah. Well then, and I'd like to go ahead and get this, get it taken care of, I'd like to have a motion to appoint, reappoint Brad Close to the Development Authority.
So moved, Mr. Speaker, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Second, Ed.
Properly moved and second, any further discussion? Another thing I added is that Brad has served as the treasurer of the Development Authority, and did extremely wonderful job, and he's been...
Been very involved, hasn't he?
He is, and he, well, he brings a nice perspective, very professional, and...
He was a former county commissioner in Warren County.
He was, and also he will be slated as, as the president of the Development Authority once... Yeah, Abe will be stepping down, he will be our treasurer, and Margie Bartosz will be the vice president on the slate, so. Also, a reappointment packet received from Jason Barrett for the Development Authority, I'd like to have that motion as well.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
Then properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I don't think we voted on the one for Mr. Close.
Okay.
We did move it, and we did second it, but I don't believe we voted on it.
Yes, you're right, thank you. Need a motion and a vote to approve Brad Close for the Development Authority. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, John. And we do have a resignation letter received from Shannon Brown for the Building Commission. We do not have an honorary commissioner this week. Next up is our bid opening for the mobile data computers.
Just one second, Mr. President, before we move forward, I called you Mr. Speaker there a second ago, I just got a lengthy text message from Roger Hanschall thanking the county and for their, for the help with the, with the police cruiser, so they are very appreciative of what Berkeley County was able to do for them, so. Well, I called you Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, well, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, so if we could, like, go ahead and bring up the captain of the Salvation Army, Captain Ramaji. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation for you this morning. So would you like to read your proclamation, sir?
Sure. The Salvation Army, whereas been serving the people of Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgon Counties for more than fifty years physically, emotionally, and spiritually, and whereas the Salvation Army is present, wherever need is greatest, especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tied, and whereas the Salvation Army invites the people of Berkeley County to love beyond and help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid by food bags, gift, family gift boxes, and free shopping in the family closet program for families to those who need it most. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the Berkeley County, West Virginia, and whereas National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during the difficult period many of us are experiencing. And whereas the Salvation Army commitment to doing the most good exemplifies the spirit of service and unity that strengthens our neighbors and uplifts our cities. And whereas the Salvation Army Red Shield has become a symbol of safety, compassion, and support to the communities. Also, I would like to read the impact report for 2024. The salvation of Martinsburg, West Virginia, snapshot for the 2024, West Virginia, six thousand people were served through the Salvation Army Social Services Programs. Two thousand forty people received clothing assistance. One hundred and eighty people served with utility assistance. One hundred and, one hundred and eight children were sponsored for the summer camp. Two thousand one hundred and sixty people were assisted through food pantry. Five thousand Christmas toys were distributed through the Angel Tree Program. Five children were assisted through Angel Tree and Sheets Program. Five hundred angel gifts were distributed through Angel Tree Program and Sheets Program. Fifty bikes and big items, which includes car seats and scooters, et cetera, were given to the children. Twenty-five seniors were assisted with Christmas gift bags. Two hundred and fifty Christmas gift, gifts were distributed to the seniors. You may not know that last year alone, the Salvation Army Martinsburg, eighty-four cents of every dollar donated to the Salvation Army went into the serving community. Serving over six thousand people of its most needy residents of Berkeley and Morgon and Jefferson County residents. During Christmas, five hundred children and two hundred and fifty families received gifts through the Angel Tree Program. Over five thousand plus items were donated so that every child receive an individual package fulfilling many of their wishes. Our social service office distributed food to two thousand one hundred and sixty people, distributed two hundred and, two thousand forty people with clothing assistance. Last year, we helped one hundred and eighty people keep their lights and heat on through our utility assistance program. It is our joy to be able to assist families and individuals in our community. Our local Salvation Army unit is on call three hundred and sixty-five days a year to respond to local, regional, and national disasters. We have been on the ground after several hurricanes on the Atlantic and Gulf Coast. Above all, Salvation Army is a church with Sunday services, women's ministries, and Sunday School, a vacation Bible school, a youth program, a camp, camping program for all ages, and weekly Bible studies. We serve without discrimination all Lounes County, all Berkeley County residents without regard to race, gender, or religion affiliation. So now therefore, we it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes the Salvation Army Martinsburg Hall during National Salvation Army Week, May twelfth through seventeenth, as worthy of recognition and commendation for their service to the community and wishes them well.
Good, thank you. I need a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
Then properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you and your organization. Most of us have no idea of all of the things that you do. We may have an idea of some of the things that you do, but certainly not to the extent as you just brought to our attention. And, you know, organizations across this county and across this country, it, it's the thread of, of the fabric of who we are and what we do and who we serve, and thank you for everything that you do. And I know you're, you're the face of this organization, and I don't have the opportunity to thank everybody that makes it work, you know, for you, but I had a, I had a occasion years ago where I assisted in the little red buildings ringing the bell. During the Christmas season, the fire department took on that project a number of years under Chief Lamp, his leadership, and I never ever would walk past one today without putting money in it because of that experience.
Thank you so much, guys.
I don't know how you get that many people to stand out there as cold as it is to do that, but you're very fortunate to have those volunteers, so.
That's a civil club, Rotary Club volunteers, and it hides some people, too.
The value of our community, though, that people volunteer to do this.
I'd like to touch on a few things. First of all, thank you, and you tell your entire organization of what you do for people that are in need. My children used to so look forward, I just put a post on Facebook today, my, my babies are grown up, but my children used to so look forward to the bell ringer so they could run and put money in there, help other children, you know, have a nice Christmas. And you touched on something there that I didn't realize was Christmas gifts for elderly people. I think sometimes our older population is a forgotten population, and it's a population that I worry about and I have concerns about with our growing, the way our county is growing and expanding, so I often worry about our, our senior population who are forgotten sometimes. And I'll tell you, and I'll tell you a little quick story, one year I received three Christmas presents from Salvation Army. I was a very young child, and it was a year that my family was going through a little bit of struggles, and, and we received Christmas gifts from the Salvation Army, and I've never forgotten that, so I appreciate everything that you do and your organization has done.
The seniors program, we have started just recently. I want to introduce my wife.
I would, we would love to meet her.
Yeah, so Priscilla has said we should do something for the seniors, and this is my wife, and she said that some people are donating, they don't know that we have this family store, and we have a trailer, let's open for the people to give it free, so people get to know, and this new program attracted so many people to get, and we are giving it out freely, that's we, we call it as a family closet. And Rotary Club has recently came and served, and also Priscilla has coordinated with the rescue mission and partnering, and you know that recently they have started the women's shelter to invite them to the home league, that is a women's group, and six of them in this partnership, they, they agreed to send in their vehicle, these ladies, and they can receive the clothes and their children, and Priscilla has arranged to send them to the free camping experience this year. This is the, this is a great partnership with us. So this family closet, we've been bringing so many clothes from the community, we couldn't get, give out to everybody, and some are left over, and Priscilla has made an agreement with the rescue mission to send their truck, because they have the bailing mission, we can give it out, and this is a great partnership, partnership with, with the rescue mission. And we, we are open to work with all the agencies in the community, and we would like to bring a good name so that the poor and rest, and needy could be taken care with our capacities, what all the capacities the community will allow us.
I would ask you to reach out, if you haven't already, to the senior services and Amy Wondorf over there, they're the executive director.
Yes, we contacted her.
I thought maybe you had, but it wasn't.
Yes, and Amy agreed to...
And they would be glad to work with you, I'm sure.
Yeah, come, come.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's my first opportunity, so grateful for that, and so much for reminding me that angels, that seniors are angels for this, and that's, this, so that I would like to do something for them for this, so that we selected like a twenty-five seniors because of restrictions or for the angel donors, we do not have that many donors to help them, but because he started this program. So twenty-five angels, like a senior angels, bought like a good prices, good gift baskets. They are very, very happy. And then second is the youth. They are the future nation for this foundation for that we are sending them to the summer camps. So that last year only nine kids went to the summer camp. This year, twenty-three kids are being sent to them. So due to the donation, so we are growing and then we are able to help the generosity of the donors of this. So that help each other, help each other. So that we have a character building program that is a core candidate, so that's I took two girls, invited them to my fold. Then they are growing spiritually, spiritually, mentally, and culturally. They are, they know about the nation, they know about volunteering things, they know about obedience to the leaderships and that they are growing in very good. That is the core candidate program. So every Sunday we keep that one. And we opened recently, we opened two new programs. One is a family closet that is equal to the, it is like a gift store, but it is free shop. There's no need to pay, and it's no problem. So anybody can go inside and then they take items for their whole family. You know that way everything is expensive now, so that's everything is precious, whatever they are giving to the people. So that's a lot of donations like our advisory board. So they are donating their clothes also, so that it's helpful to the community. So that whatever you give to that place, people are blessed to get that. We open that one and then seniors love to come and volunteer there. They want to do some service to the community, but there is no opportunity. So that that is their blessed place to come and they fold all the clothes and they feel good. And then they take, Captain, can I take that shoes? I need that one. Okay, go ahead, but it's for you. So that we are so blessed to serving them through the generosity of those. We just enhance the feet of God and we submit that we surrender our lives just to serve the community. And we thank you and we bless them, particularly in this proclamation, it is fingers are the most and more good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything.
I'd like to introduce our board member, Honorable Darrell.
Sure.
And our staff, Michelle. And our advisory board member, Pastor Nathaniel. He is our advisory board chair, he's also coming.
Thank you guys, your whole organization is a blessing to our community. And it's exciting news to hear the seniors being involved and, you know, and taking care of our youth, it's our next generation and so thank you for all that you do.
You have a great partner in the, with the Rescue Mission, with Pastor Tim Guarino. He'll be a great partner with you. I had the privilege of serving on that board for a number of years and just wonderful people doing wonderful things in this community. Yeah, we're truly blessed to have you all and thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Would you allow me to take a picture?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we can take a break if you don't mind.
Bid opening at ten.
Okay, let us get to our bid opening.
If you just stay here for a minute.
Just hang on there a second. Thank you. Penny, I don't have the letter opener.
A lot of bids going there.
I can't pick you up one. It looks like six, sir. Penny's bringing it.
I looked at mine this morning, didn't pick it out of.
Where's Whittaker?
Very good, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Next up is bid opening for mobile data computers.
Mr. President, the bids for twenty-three mobile data computers for use at the Sheriff's Department, you do have certification of the publication in the paper. It was advertised on your website and distributed to known vendors of interest. It looks like you may have about six responses.
Okay, bid number one is from Concourse Tech Incorporated. They're out of New York. Total bid, including sales tax, twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars The second bid is prepared by Strategic Sourcing out of Dublin, Ohio. They're gonna make me a fish, word. Okay, their price is forty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. Next up is NCS Technologies out of Manassas, Virginia, with a quoted price of fifty-one Hyper Tech USA out of Tempe, Arizona, thirty-two thousand forty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. That's bid number four. Bid number five is Berry Solutions Group out of Altoona, Pennsylvania, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Their company LLC of Willing, West Virginia, nineteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's it?
Good. All right. Okay, and the next bid opening is for office furniture for the Day Report Center.
Yes, sir. So this bid is for office furniture for the second floor of the Day Report Center. You do have the certification, the publication was advertised on your website, distributed to known vendors of interest, and you have two responses.
Gary, that last bid, how many machines was that for?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three machines?
This one is from Global Industrial, a bid of thirty thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I don't like that one.
I do like it already. Labor's Office Furniture out of Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents.
Easy to find.
Very good. We'll take a quick break and grab a picture with the Salvation Army, okay?
Yeah, I don't believe it's a good measurement of addressing the problem.
Okay.
You know, prior to Narcan being so readily available, we could measure overdoses pretty easily via 911 calls.
Right.
Well, now, there's a lot of overdoses that take place that we don't know about because Narcan's available, which is wonderful because lives are being saved, deaths are down. That's a good thing. We don't want people to die. However, we're not able to measure the problem quite as well.
Kind of skews the metric.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad for that information.
Yep.
I never thought about that.
Home confinement now. How are we doing that?
I'm sorry?
Home confinement.
Home confinement's rocking and rolling.
Numbers, you got...
They're up. Kate's still here. Do you know what their number is today, Kate? I want to say 135-ish. That's also just a slow, steady increase.
Sure. We were at 120 there for a long time. And that's good.
We're above that, yeah.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And for the taxpayers now, like, that's 135 people that are not setting the jails that we are paying their reimbursement rate for.
That's exactly right.
The Jefferson County staff and the commission down there are very, very appreciative of what you're doing for them.
Great.
We've all gotten thank you letters. I hope you've gotten one, Tim.
I have.
They're very appreciative.
They're very, very appreciative. We appreciate everything you do, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's what brings to a close of our meeting. Are there any items from the public? In lieu of none, I need a motion for recess.
Mr. President, I'm moving to recess.
We're in recess.